Welcome everyone to our Wednesday, April 24th, School Committee. If you would all only join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and let me do just a quick introduction of our School Committee. To my right, we have Mr. Tony Gouthy, Mrs. Rachel King, Mrs. Willian Holbrook, Mr. Mike Dolan, Vice Chair, and our Superintendent, Mr. Swenson. My name is Susan Frey-Wandowski, and to my left is Mrs. Julie Scolparis, and Rachel, who is from our Student Advisory Board. We expect Mr. Hammond to arrive shortly, and Mr. Marrera will not be able to make it tonight due to a work commitment. And first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for March 27. Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. And moving on to our correspondence recognition, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very proud this evening to recognize one of our wonderful Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School students, Mr. James McKnight. You can stand up, James. I received correspondence from our school nurse, Mrs. Przansky, on March 20--I'm sorry, April 4th, which stated, "On March 25th, we had a medical emergency in a classroom. A student had a seizure. James jumped into action, assisted to the floor, took his jacket off, and placed it under her head. He remained calm and appeared in control. He later came down with her things and explained what he had saw, which is very important in this type of an emergency. I have called his mom to praise him for his actions. He is a Boy Scout and very proud of this. He explained that is what he learned, how to react as a scout." Eagle Scout, thank you. James, would you like to come to the podium? So, thank you, James, for your actions, your swift actions in helping that student. We're very proud of you. Is there anything that you would like to say? And... Let me start out first. It's really, like, things like this happen, and we all know that. But it's not, it's, yes, scaring, but it's also because of, it's who we are, right? It's primarily scaring because that's, again, I learned everything, like, with First Aid and whatnot, from an extremely young age. It felt like scouts was a secondary school for life lessons, and that's something that I feel should be implemented into school itself. Now, I understand that, you know, things aren't what they are, and I get that. But, you know, it's not everyone's readily, you know, readily available or prepared as I was. So, it literally feels like, it's almost like, it's not just teaching, it's life lessons that you should learn for the rest of your life, and teach it to other people, friends, kids, if you have any, cousins, brothers, anywhere near there, sir. But we thank you for your swift action. James, could you come and shake the hands with me? And thank you, Mom and Dad, for raising such a wonderful son. And, James, if you could have a life lesson on civics right now and stay for the rest of this meeting, or you can go home and do your homework, which one would you like to give? All right. Spoken like a true Eagle Scout. Thank you so much. And then, which certificate would you give?
Madam Chair, I'd like to take item J to add order, personnel report by Ms. Gorman.
Motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All in favor? Aye. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Committee, Superintendent Swenson. I have the following personnel report. The following people have been appointed by the Superintendent. Lauren Weber, long-term substitute, adjustment counselor at the Mitchell Elementary School through the end of the year. Alana McDermott, education support professional at the Williams. The Superintendent has also said that the following resignations for the purpose of retirement. Louise Bramlett, education support professional at the Williams after 24 years of service, effective June 18, 2019. Theresa Lee, special education teacher at the Williams after 24 years of service, effective June 30, 2019. Cindy Dempsey, adjustment counselor at the high school after eight years of service, and that will be effective October 4th of the school year. Mary Vogel, attendant supervisor for the district after 11 years of service, effective June 30. We also have the first hire for the 2019-20 school year. Holly Hargreave will be the new principal at the Law Liberty Elementary School. She holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Westfield State College and a master's of education in reading from American International College. Holly's experience includes district director of elementary education, pre-k through grade five, Title I and Title II A Director, principal of an early childhood education center, assistant principal for ITCA, a Massachusetts public online school, and she was a classroom teacher for 16 years and a reading specialist for four. Holly's application packet included a story about her early days of teaching. I plan to read this as part of her introduction tonight, but I don't think I could have gotten through it without shedding a few tears of my own. That being said, I thought it was an important piece of Holly's background to share with the School Committee, and I hope you all had a chance to read it. So, without further ado, that ends my personnel report, but I'd like to have Holly come up and lead the School Committee.
Good evening. Thank you for that introduction. That was really nice. I just wanted to say I was excited and thrilled when Mr. Swenson called me and let me know that he was interested in hiring me for the position, but after spending a day of liberty today, I am even more so. I was welcomed by the staff, by the students, who all appeared to be very excited to be meeting their next principal, and keeping up with Mrs. Rodriguez was certainly a challenge. But I enjoyed my day and look forward to spending a few more before the start of next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have another recognition that we would like to do before our meeting further, and that would be to recognize Julie Scolparis. This is her last meeting for School Committee, so if you would join me and Mr. Swenson up at the podium. You. This certificate of appreciation is presented to Julie Scolparis as a token of esteem and recognition of the six years of dedicated service to the students of Bridgewater Rainham. And then it just says, "Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District, School Committee Member, 2013 to 2019." And we did list the subcommittees you were on, so I'm going to read them for you, because there's quite a few. The signer of warrants, Budget Subcommittee, Budget Subcommittee Chair, 2018, 2019. Building Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee, Negotiation Subcommittee, Site Dedication, Sick Lead Bank Subcommittee, Public Employee Subcommittee, and you were also the liaison to the Bridgewater Finance Committee, the Friends of Bridgewater Rainham Athletics, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and also to the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School Advisory Council. And this is awarded by the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District School Committee. And we are going to miss you, and you've worked very hard these past six years. I don't think anyone's been on as many committees in six years. So congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. I just want to say that six years ago, I ran a write-in campaign because no more papers. Did I come out and get myself into go? Did I love it? Yes. I can't believe it's coming to an end. I want to thank those that have supported me both in the community and on the board. I know I wasn't the easiest to remember. And I definitely want to give a special shout-out to Dr. Frey-Wandowski for leading my example and being with me the entire six years. So, thank you, and good luck to Bridge Water and please vote on Saturday, April 27th. Don't leave yet, because I think, Ms. Riley, did you have anything you would like to add? Ms. Riley, former School Committee Member of many years, and also Rainham Selectman. Select person, select woman.
I just want to join the chorus in saying thank you so much to Julie. Except for the last year, I served with you for those six years as well, and I can tell you, there is, I don't think anybody who put more thought into every vote that you took, Julie, and I know Agonist done it sometime, and you always had the best interest of the children in heart. And for that, as a member of the Town of Rainham, a former School Committee Member and member of the Board of Selectmen, thank you so much for all of that. And I would just say, Mr. Florence, you have very large shoes to fill, because even although Julie has small feet, she had a very loud voice, and she always spoke for the children of Bridgewater and Rainham. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Just wait to have young, invested people that are willing to step up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
I would like to add something. I would just say that when I said this at our Subcommittee Meeting a few weeks ago, that if there's one person on the committee that could find something in anything, it was you. And you made us think outside of the box, and I thank you for that, because you challenged our train of thought, and it made us really think outside the box on many issues, and that's something that, and you always kept me on my toes, which I appreciate too, if you need, so thank you for all.
Well, I'll keep that in mind when I do your evaluation.
But thank you for your use of service. I truly, truly appreciate you. I've really enjoyed working with you, and we will be missed.
All right, and I wish you all as well. They took my calls at all hours, several of them. I would change in an hour and a half. Nice.
Hey, Julie, I just want to thank you for all you've done while serving on the Town of Bridgewater, for the Town of Bridgewater on the School Committee for the past six years. Though I've only worked with you closely for two out of the six years, I have grown to admire your creative thinking. You always bring a different perspective to our conversations, and your viewpoint has really made me stop and think. For that, I will be forever grateful. The students of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District have been lucky to have such a passionate and dedicated advocate in their corner. You have always listened to your heart, especially when making difficult decisions, and have kept all the students at the forefront. I am sure our paths will cross again. After all, our town isn't really that big. You will be missed on this team, and I would like to offer you nothing but best wishes as you move on.
Thank you. And, Mr. Scolparis, thank you for sharing Julie's six years. She's all yours now. Very good. So, moving on in the agenda, next up, we'll have our educational report, and we'll start with our Student Advisory Council Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Student Advisory Council Report is always a highlight of this meeting for me, as it showcases some of the most wonderful and worthwhile events taking place at our high school each month. It's a nice reminder of why I serve on the School Committee. Our first report tonight will be presented by the chairwoman of the Board, Rachel.
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Rachel Batshill. I don't know how many more times I'm going to say that. But tonight, I'll be talking to you about AP exams, the AP Art Sendoff, and Teacher Appreciation Project. So, it's hard to believe, but AP exams at the high school are less than two weeks away. VR offers 11 different AP courses to juniors and seniors in the subjects of literature and composition, chemistry, psychology, US history, studio art, biology, calculus, language and composition, statistics, and music theory. We want to wish all the AP students and teachers luck in the upcoming weeks. On May 10th, the Advanced Placing Studio Art Class has sent in five out of our 24 pieces created all year to the AP Board. It will be scored, and it will be determined whether we pass or fail the AP Studio Art exam based on these pieces sent in and digital submissions of the 19 remaining pieces as well. Before the mailing date, Mrs. Wood has a send-off party where our pieces are laid out in the airroom, and the teachers at VR are encouraged to take a trip with their classes to come see the work. Me and my seven other AP Art Studio classmates will all stand by our tables explaining any pieces and answering questions about their ideas and creation. This school year, the School Committee Student Advisory Board once again conducted our Teacher Appreciation Project, where we asked each senior in class of 2019 to complete an appreciation form in their English classes for at least one teacher that truly impacted them during their time in high school. On the form, students reflected on what they learned from that teacher and why that teacher meant so much to them. Overall, we received approximately 350 letters, which we will be sorting and distributing to the high school's teachers for a Teacher Appreciation Day, which is on Tuesday, May 7th. This is a project we started three years ago because we wanted to give students an outlet to show their gratitude for at least one teacher they felt connected to. Over the past few years, the teachers at the high school who have received letters have responded very positively to this act of gratitude. We hope to continue this positive project at our school future graduating classes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma.
Good evening, School Committee. My name's Emma Snodgrove. It's now I'll be talking about the Senior Dates, the Day of Silence, and State Governor Day. As we approach the end of the school year, there are many upcoming important events going on around the high school. On May 17th, the Junior Program is being hosted out in Brochus and Foxborough. On May 21st, Academic Awards Night will be held. On this night, junior students are inducted into the National Honor Society, and senior members of NHS are presented with their NHS awards for graduation. Additionally, different students are awarded with department awards, superintendent's awards, and John Riley Achievement Awards. On May 28th, the senior class will be participating in the Senior Strole, where they dress in their caps and gowns and visit the district's elementary schools. Also on this day, the Senior Barbecue will be held on the turf field. On May 29th, Scholarship Night is being held in the auditorium for graduating seniors who are being awarded a scholarship towards college. On May 30th, the Senior Sale will take place on the Spirit of Boston, followed by the Senior Lock-in. On May 31st, graduation will be held at 6:00 PM on the football field under the lights. And finally, on June 3rd, All-Season Sports Awards is being held to honor the school's athletes for their performances on and off the field. Friday, April 12th, was the nationwide Student Latin Day of Silence, with the Gay Straight Alliance and VR helped raise awareness by encouraging students to participate in it, creating posters and selling buttons. On this day, staff and students who participate take a vow of silence to highlight the silencing of the LGBTQ people in schools. This day, those who participate and are helping to raise awareness and take action for a positive change in the United States and the school systems. On Friday, April 5th, two students from VR were elected to represent the high school at State Government, at State Student Government Day at the State House in Boston. Numerous students ran for the position, but only two students could win the election to represent the school. These two students were senior Andrew Barbero and junior Colby Myers. On this day, Andrew and Colby debated two bills, one on banning tackle football for students under the seventh grade, and another on banning all flavor tobacco products. Both bills are currently going through the Massachusetts State Legislature. The students also recreated the legislative process on passing the bills. Thank you.
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Chloe Guthrie, and today I'm going to be talking about the College Fair, Biogeo Field Trip, and the 8th Grade Step-Up Day. On April 3rd, members of the junior class were given the opportunity to explore future career paths in colleges at the College Fair. Representatives from a variety of universities across the nation set up stance where students were able to inquire about the school and learn more about what they had to offer. There were also representatives from other post-high school paths, including study abroad programs and the US military. Many students found that this to be very beneficial, as they were able to explore and gain insight on what they may want to do after they graduate. Many even suggested expanding the College Fair to host even more universities. Overall, the College Fair was a great success. On March 26th, Mr. Lucius' AP Biology class went on a field trip to the Harvard Museum of Natural History. There, the students were able to explore and learn more about the recent topic evolution. The museum gave the students an insight on Charles Darwin and natural selection. They had to complete an essay on what they saw in order to receive credit. For the most part, every student thoroughly enjoyed their visit to the museum. VR invited both the Rainham Middle School and Bridgewater Middle School to the high school for 8th Grade Step-Up Day. VR staff along with student freshmen and mentors displayed their expectations when entering VR, so the 8th graders had a better understanding for next year. Mrs. Beach also helped the student-to-be high school students by playing motivational videos. Both RMS and BMS dinnied lunch together, where they were encouraged to meet new people. Following lunch, freshman mentors gave groups of students a tour of essential spots in VR. Thank you.
I'm Lily Sarah, and I will be talking about Rainwater and the Scholarship Drive. This spring, amazing Rainwater players are performing Alshakab. Alshakab is a musical based on a book by Joseph de Pedro and featuring songs of Elvis Presley. The show will be performed on May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at 7:30 PM in VR's auditorium. Tickets for preferred seating are $20, and tickets for general seating are $10. Tickets are on sale at VR main office and online at the VR High School website. Alshakab is a campus event, and we hope to see you there. On March 31st, VR held their annual Scholarship Drive. The drive raises money for the Citizens Scholarship Foundation. The Citizens Scholarship Foundation provides scholarships for all the students involved. Students must participate for two years to qualify for scholarship. Small groups of students go house towers asking for donations for the foundation. Many generous neighbors donated to this foundation, which really helps all the students pray for college. This concludes our approval report. Thank you for allowing us to come and discuss fun events coming on at VR. We look forward to reporting again next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for our educational report, we have an Excel Committee Presentation, and I believe, Mr. Powers, are you going to?
Very good.
And would you like us to move our seats?
We'd love it. We are here tonight to talk to you about our social-emotional learning team that we have formed for the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District. This particular group is referred to as the Excel Group, which is Excellence through Social-Emotional Learning. We're actually part of a statewide network. The district applied to be part of this network two years ago, and we were not accepted, but we continued to seek the option of being part of that network, and we were fortunate enough to be accepted into this network this past year. So, the members of the Excel Team are here tonight to give you a quick overview of what we've accomplished this past year in such a short amount of time, and really what our plan is going forward. You can see the Excel Network is a network which is really created, the network itself is created by the Rainey Center in transforming education, as well as partnering with department elementary and secondary education. And really, the main mission of this particular network is the development of the social-emotional skills, and is also an opportunity for districts to highlight and share best practices for districts such as VR, or really in infancy stages of this, to kind of come on or learn from our current partners in other districts, but also learn from our partners at the state level and obviously at the Rainey Center. So, we've had a few different networking meetings this year. We've met at Wayman High School, there's other districts there from across the state. You can see there's approximately 19 districts all together. We belong to the South Coal Hoard, but you can see the districts up there. So, we belong to this network with Adewar, Brockton, Brookline, Moshfield, Monroy, which is down the key, North Public Schools, Wayman, Hanson, so there's the schools in our coal hoard, and you can certainly see the schools up there in the Northwest Coal Hoard as well. We are actually coming together at a statewide network meeting next Wednesday, May 1st, so all 19 school districts will be together, again, just allowing us to an opportunity to share best practices and report out on the progress and strategies that we made as a district this school year. Some of these districts were actually part of this network for two years now, so again, they're a little bit further ahead than we are, but in many ways, we've actually made tremendous progress, and I think actually catching up to some of our colleagues and maybe even surpassing others. So, pretty settled with the work that's happened thus far. But we really, as part of this network, we were originally allowed to have 10 members on our district team, and I can't say enough about the 10 members that we currently have the amount of work and time that they've actually put in thus far. Our hope is that we will expand this. We've actually already started talking to the other schools that aren't represented right now to come join our network, and we've got a great response thus far. But I do want to just highlight our other members of the Excel Team. Mr. Joe Los from our Student Services Department, Ms. Veyke at Nurse Theater, Heather Smith, the school psychologist at Bridgewater Middle School, Ms. Watson, the principal here at the high school, Ms. O'Brien is a teacher here at the high school, Mr. Matthew Clark is the assistant principal to Williams, Tara Papas is a special education teacher at the Williams, Ms. Westell, Deb Westell, is the principal at the Merrill, and Sue Gaffey is a teacher at the Merrill. The reason why, you can see up there that the Merrill, the Williams, and the high school have been selected, they really kind of started to embrace some of this work early on, and before we were part of this Excel Network. So, we really wanted to kind of tap into some schools that had already really started this work across the district. They've, you know, attended professional development on their own, they've sought out ways to bring professional development into their school and to try different initiatives. So, as a, you know, collective unit, we really get to come together and share some of the best practices that are already going on in the district, and put our collective heads together about what other options are out there for us, and what other, you know, opportunities that we can seek. But what we would like to share with you this evening, we have a short video, just to give you an overview of social-emotional learning. We want to share with you the impact of social-emotional learning, and then we also want to share with you some thoughts and ideas. The Excel Network Team, the district team, we've created our mission statement, which obviously, as you know, ties right into our pillars and our Student Success Plan, our Safety and Supporter Schools Plan. So, this team will really kind of morph into the Action Planning Team, working on that particular pillar. But then each member of the Excel Team is going to share a different SEL component or competency with you, just to give you an overview of some of the work that we're working on, that we've currently worked on and that we will be working on going forward. So, without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Veyke, I believe you're up in the next.
So, my first slide is easy, is what is social-emotional learning? And we're going to find out in this short clip, this short video.
Social-emotional learning is essential.
It's the tools that kids need to be resilient, to be problem solvers, to be good people.
SEL is really about the whole student development of young people.
SEL is trying to bring balance.
SEL is trying to bring balance to the individual and what are personal competencies you need to develop to be successful? How do you pull them all together so that kids can relate and navigate the world more effectively?
The myth was that knowledge was information that we bolted on to a brain like any other kind of mechanical part. Truth is, knowledge is constructive. The truth is, all learning is relational. The truth is, emotion drives attention, and attention drives work.
Social emotional learning is about how you do school. It's about what the student experiences, what the student learns, how teachers teach.
You can think about schools and classrooms, house school time spaces, families, et cetera, as places where there's an exchange of knowledge, knowledge about the world, knowledge about yourself, and knowledge about the other persons that you're interacting with. All of those kinds of experiences, I think, help to form and expose and shape the ways in which young people understand themselves and other people.
And we start talking about the whole child. Does your child understand self-awareness? Do they understand social? Make good decisions? Are they responsible? And then we start talking about what that applies to academics and looking at all the essentials we need to be successful in life.
Children learn when their heart is open, engaged, connected, and filled with purpose.
Learning is magical. And through SEL, we can create conditions that allow all kids to access that magic.
So the impact of social emotional learning is profound. Thirty percent, the Rainy Center determined that basically thirty percent of employers believe that college graduates lack the skills their businesses need, like goal-setting, cooperation, and awareness. That is a sad statistic, I believe. So the impact of social emotional learning on student achievement, SEL leads to better academic performance, higher college retention rates, and increased employment. Health and wellbeing, which is close to my heart. This social emotional learning is linked to lower levels of aggression, depression, anxiety, substance abuse, obesity, and criminal activity. We've discussed at a lot of our recent meetings the increases in mental health issues and the number of psychosocial visits that we're seeing in the health office and the fact that they are on the rise. Social emotional learning curriculums will help in all of these areas. Return on investment estimates suggest an average return of $11 for every $1 invested in effective school-based SEL programs. That's why we joined that cohort of districts to look at best practices so we can put the best possible program going forward for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Veyke. Given this tremendous need for social emotional learning in our schools, our first priority as an Excel team was to really try to formalize and articulate this goal and what the vision for social emotional learning was in our district. We first chose to craft a mission statement. And the mission statement and the coming visual model for our instructional framework both came from the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, which abbreviates to CASSL. And we chose that CASSL model after reviewing many social emotional frameworks and a lot of literature, and considering as a team, we felt it was the best representation of the work that we wanted to do here at VR. And we crafted the mission statement from a similar mission statement that CASSL had provided. And it states, "The mission of the Excel team is to create a safe and supportive learning environment through social emotional learning where every student and staff member is seen, valued, and heard." An essential component to this mission statement is remembering that while we, of course, think of our students first, we want our staff and every person in our school buildings and who's affiliated with our school communities to be seen, valued, and heard, and feeling safe and secure day to day so that they can best do their jobs as teachers or as learners. The visual representation of the instructional framework, which also was adapted from the CASSL framework, is up on the screen here. You'll notice that the five spokes on the interior of the CASSL wheel are five core competencies that CASSL outlines for success in social emotional learning. And members of our Excel team here are going to highlight each of those five areas and give you both what the core skills are and how we're already seeing some of those core skills take shape in form of instruction in some of our schools. I think one of the biggest strengths of our Excel team is that you represent a diverse span of grade levels across the district. So you're going to see how each of our Excel members personalizes and explains some of these core competencies through the lens of their particular building or grade level or area of expertise. Another piece to notice as you look at the instructional framework up on the screen here is that this filters through the work in the five spokes in the middle of the five core competency areas, also filters through classrooms or curriculum and instruction, schools or school-wide policies and practices, and also family and community partnerships. So there's a lot of levels and a lot of lenses that social emotional learning passes through. And that was very important to us in adopting this model, just like we had academic instructional frameworks and models as well. So next up, Ms. Westell is going to talk about one of those key competency areas and describe self-awareness.
Thank you. Good evening. So self-awareness is the ability to accurately recognize one's own emotions, thoughts, and values, and how they influence behavior. The ability to accurately assess one's strengths and limitations with a well-grounded sense of confidence, optimism, and a growth mindset. So the core skills that you would find under this would be identifying emotions, which we know for as adults sometimes is difficult for us to determine how we feel. Never mind a child or a young adult to say, "All these feelings are going on inside me. I don't know how to express them." And sometimes that results in behaviors or dysregulation or those types of things. Another thing would be accurate self-reception, recognizing strengths, self-confidence, self-efficacy, agency, and reflection. Some of the things that we're seeing now that's starting to happen throughout VR is zones of regulation. Zones of regulation is when, especially at art level at Merrill School K1, we'll ask, we'll say, "I'm green today, red." Something that's simple that a child can relate to. Green, you know, yes, I'm great, I'm ready to go, I'm ready to learn. Red, no, I'm not ready to learn. What can we do to help you? A Zen Den, we have spaces in schools, and I can certainly speak to Merrill. Each classroom, each area in Merrill, whether it's the library, the cafeteria, the gym, with there's a calming corner, some people call it a take five. What we have there is like a cool-down session, or it's a Zen Den, a place where a student can go and say, "Look, I just need five minutes." How many of us say that in the course of the day? "I just need five minutes." Well, now students have that place to go to. And through the generosity of our ECPO, we've actually created sensory toolkits. And in these toolkits, we have things that students can use to calm down, whether it's articles that they, the squeezing balls, or we can have, there's a lot of fun things in there, things you can twirl, you can see them going up and down, just something to calm you down. We also teach breathing strategies. We teach children how to breathe, five finger breathing, smelling a flower, blowing out the candle, those types of things, just to calm down your body. We also have reflection worksheets, personal journals that reflect how students learn rather than what they have learned. And again, to personalize this from Merrill School, we have created a group of teachers, between about eight of us, and we call ourselves the Safe and Supportive Team. And as the Safe and Supportive Team, we looked at, we took a survey of all the staff members. We looked at what are our urgencies? From that, we looked at the things that we wanted to really hone in on as what our goal is for Merrill School. So one of the things we started was morning meetings. This past September, every classroom at the same time, between 20 past nine and 10 of 10, morning meetings going on with the entire school. And I pop in, or the phys ed teacher can pop in. We can invite one of our cafeteria workers, or the custodian, or the secretary. Everyone's involved in morning meeting. And it's just that, you come in, you meet, you greet each other, you have an activity to do, you share if you'd like to. But it's something that the whole school is doing at the same time. And as a team, the Safe and Supportive Team, we thought it was important for us to do it school-wide. And we're able to readjust our schedule. And it's something that's really sacred in our school every single morning. Again, I talk about sensory toolkits. We have morning check-ins. There are some kids that really just need to pop in in the morning in the office, and we sit and have breakfast, or we sit and have a chat before they go in. We also have a kitchen table. We literally have a kitchen table in Mr. Poole's office. And what we do with this kitchen table is we have breakfast. Sometimes I have lunch with students. Sometimes students have projects to do, and maybe they don't have anybody at home to do them with. So they come down to the kitchen table in the office, and we do it with them. That whole sense of family, that whole sense of doing your homework at the kitchen table is now done sometimes in the office. We have, we provide PD for our teachers. We also have our own school mascot now, which is a huge success with our students. And we also have something that the Safe and Supportive Team called Educated Wellbeing. One of our PDs, we had yoga for all of the teachers at one time. Had someone come in and do yoga with all of us, some breathing exercises. We have, teachers know that if you need a break, they can go off into their classroom for five minutes. They can break all these things that we're talking about to support each other so that we can support the kids.
Thank you, Ms. Westell. So the second segment of the five-part wheel is social awareness. Social awareness is the ability to take the perspective of and empathize with others, including those from diverse backgrounds and cultures. The ability to understand social and ethical norms for behavior and to recognize family, school, and community resources and supports. Some of the core skills that speak to this are perspective-taking. And just like Ms. Westell said, this isn't just about the students. Often, as adults, we struggle with some of these skills and concepts. So it's important for all of us, regardless of age, position, any of those things, that we're all working on these things. So perspective-taking could be difficult for a lot of people. Empathy, appreciating diversity, respect for others, or agency and understanding, those are the core skills. Some ways that these skills are already being applied and built upon from the K-12 level. At the elementary school, they do word-of-the-month discussions. So perhaps the word of the month this month is respect. So throughout the day, in all of the different classes, the teachers are talking about respect. The students are talking about respect. They're fusing it into the curriculum. Another application is taking the perspective of a character and a story students are reading. And that's something that can be done pre-K through 12. I know I can only speak, at the high school level, we do that often in all of our English classes as well as our history classes. Discussion of world events, watching or reading impactful news stories, and then discussing them. And a great example of agency at the high school level is having our student council have a voice in district topics, which is really important for students to have a voice and to be able to speak about different things at different levels, to be involved. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Matt Clark, the assistant principal at the Lewis School. And I'm going to talk about responsible decision-making. This is the ability to make constructive choices about personal behavior and social interactions based on ethical standards, safety concerns, and social norms. The realistic evaluation of consequences of various actions and a consideration of the well-being of oneself and of others. Of course, skills here are identifying problems, analyzing situations, solving problems, evaluating, reflecting, ethical responsibility, and agency in choices. Now, some of the applications of responsible decision-making may be setting up peace stations in classes where students could go and resolve conflicts with one another. As an assistant principal, this would be fantastic. As far as, you know, teachers, they could perhaps give students a range of options for completing assignments. They could give students some voice by allowing students to evaluate their lessons. This would create a student-centered atmosphere where students feel they have a minimum. And finally, encouraging students to set achievable goals. These are not only great things for students, but for faculty, for adults, for parents. So, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Heather Smith. As a school psychologist, I can talk about social emotional learning forever. I was going home tonight, so I'll stick to stuff management, which refers to taking responsibility of one's own well-being and behavior by successfully regulating emotions, thoughts, and behaviors in different situations. This includes effectively managing stress, controlling impulses, and motivating oneself. The ability to set and work towards personal and academic goals. So core skills. We're teaching both explicitly and remodeling impulse control strategies, stress management, self-discipline, self-motivation, goal-setting, organizational skills, and promoting agency and creating vision. Application includes strategies pertaining to impulse control. We mentioned various regulation strategies and grounding techniques. There's butterfly breathing, which pre-K through middle high school, really, we can use. Lots of different types of deep breathing, grounding techniques, 7-Eleven breathing, belly breathing, hot chocolate breathing. We are teaching mindfulness, beginning to really introduce the concept of mindfulness to our students, which also helps with stress management. This involves being present in the moment without judgment. Mindfulness offers ways to practice single-tracking your mind. And it helps us consciously choose our next action and have control over that. We also mentioned Zen Dens and places to kind of cool down, remind you of zones of regulation and regulation strategies. We have sensory toolkits in various parts of classrooms, which offer, Deb was saying, some fidgets and chidi, things like that. We also utilize behavior charts, or behavior contracts, or certain agreements that we draft up, which often involves, at least initially, students working towards sometimes a more tangible reward. But the goal is to progress to those students developing their own goals and buying in to work towards those goals and developing that intrinsic motivation. And then finally, we utilize checklists and rubrics, both pertaining to academic assignments to foster time management, breaking down long projects or assignments, as well as personal kind of timelines and management of long and short-term goals for students.
We got it. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Laura O'Brien, and I am a teacher at the high school. And I was super excited when Ryan and Angela asked me to be part of this initiative. The relationship skills part of the wheel is one that we really, at the high school, have kind of picked apart and started some really fun initiatives and things that we are already doing. Relationship skills is defined as the ability to establish and maintain healthy and rewarding relationships with diverse individuals and groups. The ability to communicate clearly, listen well, cooperate with others, resist inappropriate social pressure, negotiate conflict constructively, and seek and offer help when needed. Really boils down to just being able to have successful communication with all kinds of people in all kinds of situations, and to be able to express empathy. The core skills included in the spoke of the wheel include communication, social engagement, relationship building, teamwork, and agency in positive interactions. There's a lot of crossover between the different competencies in the wheel. And I'm going to go out of order on the application side and just start at the bottom with the morning meeting, evening meeting, or advisory blocks. Because that's the part of the relationship skills initiative that we really have taken off with. And really, to give props to Deb Westell and Sue Gaffney and the team, because in speaking about our initiative and our team, it was their idea to invite Dean, who's here tonight, he's the Excel director, to invite Dean and I to come and see a morning meeting in a first-grade classroom. So we went and we saw all of the things that Deb described in Sue Gaffney's classroom. And it was truly amazing. And we watched a morning meeting. And then from there, we just took that and we adapted it first and rolled it out with our night school students. And with the understanding that the population can be challenging, and they come to us with baggage and trauma and all kinds of things, that are the reason why they don't succeed often in a traditional daytime setting. And we decided that we would start right from day one this semester, and we would build relationships with these students. And we decided that we would start right from day one this semester, and we would build relationships with these students. So we took the model that, at the elementary level, and we just turned it into an evening meeting. And we started every Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday with the chairs in a circle. And we have a topic. And the difference between how the relationships that we have with these kids this semester compared to last semester is just, I could go on and on about how amazing an experience it's been and how the attendance of the kids, the tardiness to night school has gone way down because they don't want to miss that part of the evening. And even if we don't have them in a particular class that evening, all of the staff that works in the Excel knows not only the names of all of the students, but a great deal about them. And it's just been an amazing experience. So from there, after we had such a great success with the evening meeting at the night school, for fourth term as a result of this committee, Angela and I rolled out a pilot in which we started a Monday morning meeting just for fourth term with just a volunteer group of teachers. We just put it out there and said, who wants to do this? And I just created sort of a document with different topics and just asked for their feedback. And the feedback that we got from these awesome folks that just put themselves out there and said, yeah, we'll try it, has been incredible. So the hope is that eventually, a Monday morning meeting would become the way that Deb runs it at her school. It would kind of evolve and be something that would be happening school-wide at the high school. If not next year, hopefully the following year. And we have our long block every day of the week, and we have a rotating schedule. So the Monday morning meeting would only impact one academic class once every seven weeks, which would eliminate any concerns that people may have about instructional time. Um, and over the course of the year, you would have that 15- to 20-minute non-academic social interaction with your class one to two times per term. So, um, we're excited to hopefully roll that out. And we're also, you know, we're expanding, as Ryan said earlier, our team to include people from all buildings and hope that that will become a district-wide initiative. So those are the things that we're really excited about at the high school. We've done some other activities that Angela has read in order to identify kids that may not have relationships with individual teachers. We've done an activity at faculty meetings, an ongoing, and then Angela's collecting data. And we're hopefully going to identify kids that, when given a list of names, no particular teacher could say that they really knew very much about that child. And we'll be able to then use that data to identify those kids. And once people know that these are kids that feel they don't have strong connection or a strong relationship with any one adult in this building, we know that our teachers will wind their way to strike up a conversation about a baseball game or a movie, or anything at all, to make sure that every single child in our building feels like they have some human connection to some adult in our building. So that's a huge, uh, a huge goal for us and one about which I am so excited. At the elementary level, as I said, I think these applications are very similar. I think we changed vocabulary and maybe changed the schedule. But obviously, we don't have recess. They're doing things like a buddy mentor recess, which in sort of the way I think about that, is an elementary adaptation of us as adults figuring out how at high school we're going to identify kids that don't have any connections with adults. And providing opportunities to work in groups or with a partner, working as a mediator when two students are in an argument, and establishing math and reading partners, which would be academic at the core. But you hope that the side effect is that when you put kids together, they might become friends. So I will turn the page over to Ryan, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So again, I can't thank enough the members of the team and, uh, for, you know, for being here tonight and sharing their information with you, but also their commitment throughout the school here. And obviously, you can see the application already going on back in their buildings. I think one thing to, you know, highlight, we've obviously had a lot of teachers come forward to say, I want to be part of this. Well, one of the great pieces of feedback that we're getting actually from the students, I know Miss Watson and Miss O'Brien could probably share more. But they're getting feedback from the kids, saying, something's going on. We're doing these activities in some of our classes, and it's not just one class. It's happening in several classes, and we love it. We're actually getting to talk to our teachers. We're getting to talk to our, you know, colleagues, our other students in our class. Things that maybe, you know, weren't happening in the past. So it's, you know, the benefit's going to be there. You can see from those early slides, I mean, ultimately, what are we all here for, right? The academic success of our students. And I can tell you firsthand, doing this work as a building principal, you know, scores in, which unfortunately we're not all about, but, you know, we're sometimes measured by those. If scores are going to go up, students are going to be ready and available to learn. And they're going to head grade students' success academically if we can focus on the social, emotional, and behavioral aspects of their life as well. So going forward, you can see some of the things that, you know, we're obviously having the works. Certainly, this, again, all ties back into our student success plan. Safe and supportive schools is one of our main pillars, and we're obviously working on that. You can see that we're going to, you know, continue to expand our Excel team to include representation from all schools. We obviously will be working on creating action plans to accomplish, to really kind of highlight and identify what we really hope to accomplish the rest of this year and then going forward. And, you know, we're trying to model best practices starting at the administrative level. Our last two administrative councils, we've opened meetings, we had social-emotional learning activities because it's important for Derek and I to model what we hope our principals will in turn model for their staffs, who will hopefully in turn model that for students. So we are committed to it. I can't thank Mr. Swenson enough. It's something that I talked to him about when I first came to Bridgewater-Ringham. And it's something that, you know, we've continued to talk about. Mr. Swenson is 100% behind it, as is the school committee. So I can't thank you enough for your support as well. At the end of the day, I know we all want what's best for the students at Bridgewater-Ringham, and this is certainly part of it. And you've committed yourselves to that. Our principals and other administrators and our teachers are too. So the future is very bright for Bridgewater-Ringham in many different ways, certainly through the social-emotional learning plans. So I just wanted to thank you. We're happy to, you know, answer any questions. I know we were maybe a little bit longer-winded than we had hoped, but you can see the passion of this group and what we really, you know, are invested in and want what's best for our students going forward. So again, hats off to my team, our team, and obviously, thank you to Mr. Swenson and the school committee for their continued support.
Mr. Swenson, did you have anything to add?
Yes, Madam Chair. As you know, over the course of the last few years, we've brought to the attention of the committee and the community the uptick that we've had in our social-emotional issues and mental health concerns. With that being said, the work that Mr. Powers and our Excel team is a very proactive approach to try to curb some of these issues. As you know, from a budgetary standpoint, we're advocating for more school psychologists and school adjustment counselors, which are great, those are needed, absolutely. But those folks are there, it's almost a Band-Aid approach. We really truly need to take a more proactive approach in incorporating this type of learning within our classrooms each and every day. I will say that, speaking with Mr. Powers since he's been to our district, this is really truly his wheelhouse, and I really trust him when he tells me that these things, if implemented with fidelity, are going to work and are going to have those students that may become dysregulated be able to regulate themselves and identify, like we said in these courses, and be able then to access the curriculum. That's what this is all about. So kudos to all of you. I'm so proud tonight with all the work that you folks have done. I really truly am. And, um, as Mr. Powers says, you know, at the beginning of our admin meetings, you know, Mr. Powers has begun to incorporate some of these strategies. We did a mood meter at the last, to the last month's meeting. And this morning, we actually did a mock morning meeting, which was great, where we introduced one another and then we shared something about ourselves. And actually, we did some type of activity that was actually linked to academics. So those types of things are going to get students engaged, feeling connected, and actually then being able to access an educational component too. So again, kudos to you folks. I am so proud of the work. I'm so excited as to where this is going to go in terms of incorporating it into all of our schools. And I really truly think over time, if implemented with fidelity, we're truly going to see some of that uptick in the social-emotional issues begin to decline. And that's the ultimate goal, along with this becoming, allowing children to be ready to learn each and every day. So thank you once again.
Anyone else have any questions, Mrs. King?
I've actually seen this in practice, my youngest daughter is at the Merrill. The things that Mrs. Westell has incorporated there this year are amazing. The kids are so excited in the morning. They love that morning meeting. It kind of gives them that transition period into the day. And Mrs. Gaffney goes above and beyond. Her greeting with each child is personalized. Her classroom is, I'm having crazy mood lately. Her classroom has alternative seating and wherever the kids are comfortable. So her classroom is amazing if any of the... If anyone has a chance to see her classroom, I really suggest it. Her kids are so excited and so involved. I'm really so happy with what they're doing there.
Very good. Anyone else?
Sure. Do you have two things? Sorry, go ahead. The two things, I said this to Mr. Powers during the presentation. We need to make sure we incorporate some of what you've talked about as an eventual building. Ms. Holbrook, Mr. Swenson, and I serve on that committee. We need to make sure that when, now that we're in the design phase, that we really look at a lot of these things and make sure that they're in the building.
And believe it or not, just, you know, obviously, all the designs, that they are there. They might not be necessarily being utilized in this way, but there's spaces. We need something like an OT room, occupational therapy room, or the APU E room. There's equipment in there that all of our students can benefit from. Typically, you know, those students that benefit from those services are students that are high IP and require those type of therapies. But the equipment in there, the instruction that those students receive reacts and benefiting of all of our students. I know when we looked at having APE space or OT space, we made sure it was large enough that it wouldn't just be for one student receiving, you know, OT services. It could be for a number of students going in there. That room might be large enough for a swing, or for a regulation ball pit, or an area big enough to do some of these self-regulation movements. Again, because I think we can, the spaces in there, we just need to tap into utilizing them for all of our students.
And then my second thing is, would there ever be a point where we would present this to parents? I think that not just the parent groups, but parents in general would. This might be a value to share with our family.
Absolutely. I think it's just, you know, I mean, our hope is that it comes woven into the fabric of our schools. So it's much like when the principals and the teachers get out that open house or other type of events where they're talking about what we do in math and what we do in reading. This is also what we do in S D L. This is how we're, you know, helping your students to be successful, not just academically, but overall, the whole child. So I don't disagree at all. I definitely think it's something that, happy to continue to talk about with any group that will listen. Certainly to your point, you know, letting the parents know that these are things we're working on. We can certainly have some type of parental agreement or for that information. But, you know, I think the ultimate goal would be then to have it should be part of the fabric of the school.
Thank you.
Mr. Gelfe?
Yeah, just being a teacher in Brockton, Mr. Powers. I've seen it, I've used it in my classroom, and I've seen it work with kids using the skills that were taught throughout the year. It's really, really impressive. And to your point, um, Michael.
Michael?
Michael, sorry. I have, I've gotten feedback from parents because they see, they see the difference at home to the way they handle their situations.
Yeah, and I think that that, I thought, had that thought when I saw that circle and it said, um, community. That really resonated with me, even our sports teams, our town sports teams, our girl scouts, our boy scouts, all of that. I think it's transferable across the board. And if we can really incorporate it beyond our schools, I think we'd be serving our students even better.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, everyone, for coming for that report. And thank you, Mr. Powers. Every month, you give us a wonderful educational report, and we appreciate that very much. And then now we're going to move on to our administrative and school committee reports. And first, we have our budget subcommittee update, Mrs. Copares.
Okay. The budget subcommittee met on Wednesday, April 10th. It ended the previous meetings in March, it was pretty mild. In attendance were myself and Dr. B. Nelson and Tony, as part of members, and Mike was at work commitment. At the meeting, Mr. Conley gave the Treasury Report, which we will also present tonight. Ms. Macedo reported on the fiscal year '19 budget, which she will report on tonight. Mr. Fox gave a facilities report and shared the capital approval plan. We had a few adjustments for him, but, and he will give us more updated ones before his departure. But we did have one voting item, so I would, in a formal motion, I would like to move, this rep last and Mr. Fox, up on the agenda.
Sure. Motion by Mrs. Copares, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Fox, you're up.
Evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Swenson, members of the school committee. This evening, I'm here to ask permission to declare two Merco fry masters as surplus. They're original to this building and were designed with it. Because the school district no longer fries food, they have set to become obsolete materials, I'm asking permission to find the proper means to put better use to them, declare them as surplus, and ultimately get them out of the district.
So do I have a motion to declare the fry later surplus? Motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Copares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted, and thank you as well, Mr. Fox, for all your hard work for the district. We wish you the best of luck in your new job. Thank you very much.
So that was the easy meeting. There was an additional info session held at Bridgewater State College on Monday evening at 6:00. With the delayed start at 6:30, we'd be tracking for one of the presenters. The informational session was arranged by Senator Chico to help us understand the funding formula for schools. And Senator Jason Lewis, the co-chair of the Joint Committee of Education, was also there. In attendance were school committee, local school committee, school committee members, superintendents. And Bridgewater was fortunate enough to have Town Council Sean George, Assistant Town Manager Kim Williams, and Teacher Ashley, is it her name?
Slater.
Ashley, formerly Ashley Slater, and I forget her married name.
Mallory.
But the presentation was the funding formula, how it works, and why it needs to be fixed, followed by questions and answers. They explained the education reform efforts on Beacon Hill, the Governor Baker bill, the Representative Tucker's bill, the Promise Act. We talked about what makes up funding. Step one, calculating the foundation budget, which is at the Senate, House, Ways and Means. Step two, calculate the local contribution. Step three, Chapter 78 is supposed to make up the difference between state and local aid, and how local aid is calculated. Local property values plus local income equals the ability to pay. The combined effort yield divided by the foundation budget equals the total local share. We all know that the budget that we proposed is still a work in progress from the town side. So, you know, I am who I am, and that's what they tell us it is. The problem is, the foundation budget is significantly underestimated actual cost, resulting in inequities across the districts. The three cost drivers were health insurance. There's a $1.4 billion gap between the foundation budget and actual cost. Special ed costs, $1.03 billion variance in estimates versus actual cost. And then out of district, $159 million gap. And then out of district isn't necessarily special ed, it was in reference to charter schools. They said the next steps would be to implement the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, engage and get feedback to the House, Senate, and Governor Baker to make education funding a priority. Myself and Mr. George were like, okay, those are problems for some districts, but for our district, transportation. our district, transportation. The regionalized districts are, you know, we encourage to regionalize and we are supposed to get 100% for transportation and it's really around 70%. You know, that 30% would go a long way in helping us achieve the budget that we, you know, we need and want for our students. In the question and answer highlight section, they compete in contrast to legislative bills and the governor's bill. A superintendent of another district, Somerset Berkeley, mentioned inequities in some region like districts to provide funding appropriately. You know, Somerset Berkeley aren't equal, Bridgewater and Rainham aren't equal when it comes to residential versus commercial. Doesn't mean our students aren't entitled and deserve, you know, proper funding. Lack of PROMIS funding for general school transportation, any issues with that may be addressed to Senator Adam Hines. And then, this kind of, because there's been references to student enrollment going down here, and we talked about how it's not going down and why class sizes are going up in our district because of the funding and trying to save money. But they said that statewide student enrollment training is going down, but there are no change in the formula. Statistics with increasing enrollment may actually suffer. Bottom line is, they know it's broken. The formula's broken. We don't get the money we need. And they're working on it, but it's going to be based in possibly over 70 years through inflation. So, fight the fight. And even though I'm stepping back, I'm going to continue to fight the fight and I hope that, I know, I trust that this table will, and I hope that others will too.
Thank you very much for attending that meeting. Appreciate that. All right. And next up, we have our long-range planning subcommittee report. Mrs. Holbrook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The long-range planning subcommittee met on Monday, April 22nd, and the following committee members were present, Mr. Dolan, Mrs. King, and myself. Mr. Shantz, Mr. Swenson, and Mrs. McDougal were also in attendance. We invited Mr. Shantz, the district's IT manager, to our meeting to outline for us the technology needs of the district as he saw them. They aligned very nicely with what the committee saw as a plan for the next five to 10 years. We asked Mr. Shantz if he would please put together for us a five-year plan of his priorities of each of the five years. Also, as part of your packet this evening, you should have all received a copy of the timeline for the superintendent's evaluation cycle, the superintendent's goals for 2018-19 school year, the end-of-the-year cycle summative evaluation report for the superintendent, as well as the model rubrics for the superintendent's evaluation. While the superintendent's evaluation is not until July, we thought it would be best for the committee to familiarize themselves with these documents and ask any questions prior to evaluating the superintendent. As the evaluation deadline comes closer, Dr. Prendt Delski will give us further information on when she would like the evaluations to be turned in to her so that she can compile them and the results can be reported out to the committee in July. And that is the end of our report.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next up, we have the Mitchell School Building Project update. Mr. Swenson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, April 1st, our OPM Shane Nolan and lead architect Jean Raymond led an all-day workshop and met with approximately 25 teachers, ESPs, proctors, administrators from the Mitchell Elementary School, as well as district representatives from facilities and food service. The purpose of this meeting was to obtain feedback and insight in regards to the preferred schematic design that was to be submitted to the MSBA for their approval. This valuable exercise was an essential component to the building process and it truly assisted us in driving the vision of not only the interior but the exterior learning spaces that will be incorporated within the schematic design. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all those individuals who participated in that working group and to know that your time and efforts are greatly appreciated. On Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, I, along with the Bridgewater Town Manager Michael Dutton, attended the MSBA board meeting at their offices in Boston. I'm very happy and proud to report that this meeting, the Mitchell Elementary School Project is relighted to proceed forward with the preferred schematic design. On Monday, April 22nd, RDA presented an updated schematic design that incorporated all of the ideas and concepts that were presented by the 25 individuals who participated in the working group on April 1st to the members of the school building committee. The project budget, floor plan, site, landscape, play area, HVAC, and electrical systems and LEE checklist were all presented and reviewed. The members of the school building committee provided our designers and consultants with feedback to further refine the schematic design. The school building committee will meet on a regular basis right up until July 8th, where we hope to receive local approval to submit a final schematic design to the MSBA in hopes of receiving their approval to proceed further in the process at their Wednesday, August 28th, 2019 board meeting. Additional public forums will take place on Wednesday, May 8th at 1:00 PM at the Senior Center and on Thursday, June 13th, here in the lecture hall at 7:00 PM. We encourage all community members to please attend these important informational meetings. And as always, additional Joe Gage Mitchell Elementary School Project and MSBA information updates can now be found at www.bridgewater-schoolproject.com.
Good, thank you. And next up, we have our transportation and childcare update. Mr. Swenson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, over the course of the last year since the elimination of pay-to-ride, my team has been working with members of the community to try to help assist some of those parents that may have some difficulties with transportation. And also on the Rainham side, we're seeing that as the town of Rainham grows, so does the need for before and after-school care. And I've been working very closely with the director of the Park and Recreation Program, Mr. Tim McCray, who is here this evening, along with Mr. Beulie, who's here from our base program on the Bridgewater side. First, in regards to the transportation piece, I would say that we reached out to, and I'd like to thank, I thought I saw her here, she might have, I know she's right there, Mrs. George, who's done a wonderful job over the course of the last year, reaching out to local vendors, transportation vendors, to see if this is something that they would want to take on privately with our families as a cottage, little cottage industry. We did get some feedback from a few, but really truly one company in particular really had some interest, and that was A&amp;A Metro here in Bridgewater on Route 18 and owner Tom O'Ricky. And over the course of the last few months, myself and Mrs. George have been meeting with Mr. O'Ricky. We've been explaining how the district ran the pay-to-ride program, talked about routing, we talked about payment schedules, we talked about a lot of different components of the pay-to-ride program. He has agreed now to take that on. We met with Mr. O'Ricky last week over April vacation. We kind of did some finalizing of things that he had questions on in regard to the program. Today, he did submit to us an informational flyer that we will be presenting to those families next week. We, again, we've identified those former pay-to-ride families and the non-eligible riders, and we will be presenting that information to them. Again, that will be a contract that is done privately with Mr. O'Ricky and A&amp;A Metro and the families. It is not affiliated with the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District. I just want to stress that and emphasize that to our families. And we do thank Mr. O'Ricky for all his time and efforts in being able to take this on. And we're hoping that this is a program that will be able to assist some of those families who unfortunately, with the elimination of pay-to-ride, as we know, was not sustainable by the district in regard to not being reimbursed by the state for that and the fees that we had, just could not keep up with the amount of product that we had to put on the road to support that program. So, that's one piece to the puzzle, which we're hoping will help some of our families. The second one is on the Rainham side. On the Rainham side, currently, the Park and Recreation Program is growing exponentially with the amount of families moving in, which we said is great. We love having, you know, school-age families moving in. But again, with a lot of parents working, both working, they do need care before and after school. Currently, there's a waitlist at the Park and Recreation Program. Do want to stress to you, because I know that sometimes there's a lot of misconception and misinformation out there, that the Park and Recreation before and after-school program is not run through the district. That is run through the Park and Recreation Department in Rainham. On the Bridgewater side, however, the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District runs programs through Mr. Beulie and the base program at the Mitchell Elementary School and at the Williams. So, what we've done is, we've come together, we've had several meetings over the course of the last year. We talked about creating a supplemental program at the Rainham Middle School to help alleviate that waitlist for Park and Recreation and provide service to our families in Rainham who may be on that waitlist. It is going to be run through Mr. Beulie, but it is going to, again, be a supplemental program. It's not going to be a competitive program with Park and Rec. Point being is that families will have to go through Park and Recreation first, apply through them. If they are placed on the waitlist, they will then be given an application for the program that will be run at the Rainham Middle School. With that, with permission of the committee, I'd like to invite Mr. McCray and possibly Mr. Beulie to the podium so they can talk a little bit about where we are in the process. And again, similar to the informational flyers that will go up from A&amp;A Metro next week, we're looking to promote the supplemental program next week to our families in the town of Rainham. Mr. McCray?
Mr. Swenson, school committee, thank you for having me back. I greatly appreciate it. Currently, as Mrs. Swenson did say, we have been several times this year and it's been a, it's been a really enlightening experience. You know, we, we're coming together to really try to alleviate a problem that we had in town of Rainham. It's going to be an overflow program. So, basically, it's going to be two separate entities coming together to solve the problem. We have currently over 100 families right now on our waitlist. And as we get closer to next year, we expect that list to grow. So, currently on our end, we have applied to the state for daycare expansion. Right now, we have morning and afternoon at Liberty, and currently, we have only morning at the middle school. The goal is, and unfortunately, we are waiting on the state, which is the hardest part on our end, is, our goal is to increase the number we have in the morning. Right now, we have 26 students eligible at Merrill in the morning and nobody in the afternoon. With our goal, we're going to go to 39 in the morning and 52 in the afternoon at Merrill and keep the 52 we have in the morning at Liberty and 78 in the afternoon. That way, we'll be able to alleviate quite a bit, knock on wood, on our waitlist. And then, those that are interested, my office is going to reach out to the families on the waitlist, find out who would be interested in the overflow program. Mr. Beulie, we've covered the name of RMAC, which stands for the Rainham Middle Alternative Care. And those students on the waitlist, once we get that information back on who is interested in joining, we'll pass it along to Mr. Beulie, and he will get those going. But once a spot opens up in our program, they will contact my office with the schools and they will come back into our program. It's a great way for two municipal departments to come together and really solve a problem.
I have a quick question.
Which one?
I just want to reiterate, I think we've said this many times, so even though there's quite a bit of a waiting list, we still want to encourage people to sign up.
Yes.
Okay, so, you hear throughout the town, oh, there's a big waitlist. Well, we know that and we still want you to sign up because in the end, in summer, we're going to disperse those people and hopefully take care of everyone on that list if possible.
That's it. That is the ultimate goal. You know, again, as I mentioned...
I'm not the one.
Absolutely. As I mentioned, we really have to get the state to give us that final go-ahead because we have the E C license over our head, so we cannot go out of ratio and have more than that number of students here, or we could have some serious trouble. So, as soon as they get out, you know, I feel positive about it. It's just a matter of, fortunately, playing the waiting game right now. So, as of now, we are going to continue to go forward with the overflow program, just to try to help and, you know, hope that we get approval sooner rather than later so we can really figure this, this out going forward.
Thank you.
And the prices of the program and the pay scales and pay schedule, I should say, are going to vary that at Park and Rec. Again, so if someone does pay for a week and then they have a spot open to Park and Rec, they'll be able to transition the following week. Again, thank this gentleman enough and what Mr. Beulie does for our base program. He runs a tremendous program on this side of the district. I have the utmost confidence that he'll be able to implement just as effective a program for the students on the Rainham side.
Thirteen years ago, when I started at the base program, there were probably 20 kids. We're now almost pushing 500. So, I got to imagine the standard that was happening in Rainham. The base is looking forward to working with Park and Rec and to, because a lot of parents are moving in and we need to take care of the kids. That's what we'll do and we'll get it done.
So, we have, and I do want to thank Mrs. Charette and Mrs. Westell, who've been part of those meetings, Mr. Powers, Ellen George, Kathy, Macedo. We're all collectively working together as a team to figure out space availability. And that's going to kind of be a tricky piece to that because that program before school and after school, we're going to have to figure that out because if you have elementary school students there, before school, the middle school day is going to begin. So, we've got to be a little bit cognizant of that. Also, anyone knows the world of middle school, after school, there's an enormous amount of activities that happen, whether it be intramurals or athletics there or the numerous clubs. So, we really got to kind of figure out some of those logistics rather quickly. So, we want to get that information out in the next few weeks. Our goal is to try to, by, I think we put a date of like May 23rd, that we would have an idea of exactly who is going to be on that waitlist, who's going to be in our program. And at that point, Mr. Beulie can then post for his positions that he needs and hopefully hire those folks prior to leaving for the summer, and then we'll be able to hit the ground running come September, so.
Very good. Thank you, everyone.
So, thank you for all your efforts. Peter.
So, next up, we have our FY '19 quarterly budget report, and I'm not sure if anybody that's done wants to go home. Can we discuss the home people that...
My admin team feels...
Needs to leave, we certainly understand.
Kathy's going to leave.
Don't drive me home.
Except for you, Mr. Fox.
Ms. Macedo, thank you very much. You're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, superintendents, Swenson. I've always been told that talking about numbers late at night is a good thing. So, all you folks, I get to leave, you're missing out on a good one tonight. Okay? We did meet at the budget subcommittee and went over our budget, which brought us through the March 31st time period. And I'm just going to point out a few things. We do have several accounts that appear to be in deficit, but they have large blanket-type encumbrances, which means those amounts may or may not come to fruition. So, you may see that throughout the report. I'm seeing some of them are obviously showing that they're not going to come to what the total encumbrance is, and I'll point that as I go along. But on page one and two, we strike this bottom on page one and the top of page two. This is our IT area. And again, here we have several accounts with large encumbrances that end up putting the budget balance into the negative. However, overall, in these line items, if you look at the bottom line on page two at the top, they were still in the positive by $5,528. the top, they were still in the positive by $5,528. So overall, we'll be able to cover any of those that may come to fruition as deficits. Our next section on page three, you'll notice at the bottom and in the teacher line, we had at the beginning of the year, while we did the budget, determined that we would use school choice funds. And we were going to use $500,000 worth of school choice funds to take teacher payments and then charge them to the school choice line account. And as that is showing at the high school, you see an account that has $500,000 in deficit. And going to be taking those expenditures and moving them to school choice, so that deficit will go away. Okay, so it's just a good reminder that we'll be doing that at year end. Page four, our substitute lines down toward the bottom. As you know, we talked about some new line account numbers that the state has asked us to do. They wanted us to break out long-term substitutes, and that was for folks who are 30 days or more in a particular position. And as that occurs, we move money from the short-term subs, which are more the day-to-day subs, up to those lines. But you'll see that we have a few accounts that have negative balances, although overall, we are about $11,797 to the good from last year's expenditures at this time. And that includes everything from teachers, nurses, ESPs, and secretaries. So we've done pretty well as far as trying to keep down those expenses. And again, overall, in that whole section, we still have about $90,000 from now until year end. So that looks pretty good at this point, but again, the summer's coming and the months down in May and June sometimes is where we see most of those expenditures occurring. The rest of the budget up until page eight is pretty much all in black and doing well. So if we go to page eight, again, one of our areas is special education transportation. And as I look at this, I notice encumbrances that are still pretty high considering we're more than halfway through the school year. So that indicates to me that chances are those are not coming to fruition, and they're going to be something less than what's there. So I'm anticipating that the overall $568,000 that were in deficit is going to be something less than that. And we're working with the business office staff and the special education department to start culling out some of those transportation purchase orders that cannot start to be Page nine, page nine is where we have our utilities. We have heating of the building kind of at the top of the page, and then we have electricity, water, and telephone. It looks to me with the heating of the building, we have still $213,000 encumbered. I think Paul shut the heat off. So the heat's shut off, I think we're going to see that we're not going to be spending the 213. I think that's going to help resolve that balance there of about $83,000 that's in the negative. Electricity, we did say we would use some of the base funds, because we are extending in the morning and at night, the use of the building and using electricity. And it's a legitimate cost to be able to charge off to base, so it will help us a little bit with those electricity bills. Water, we still got $111,000 encumbered, we've only spent 73. I think we're going to be pretty close though, because I think we're a little bit behind in some of the bills because of the issues that we had had with metering. Going down to maintenance of building, down at the bottom, page nine at the bottom, you'll see that we have a lot of accounts that appear to be in deficit, but then again, we have a lot of large encumbrances. Those are blanket-type encumbrances for if an emergency occurs. Mr. Fox can then just go right to the story needs to go to, purchase whatever it is without having to go through the red tape of, "I have to do requisition, I have to wait for it to be approved," and so on and so forth. And we'll also be working in May with Mr. Fox to help go through those and start identifying which ones can be released. Page 10, we just have to watch our health insurance lines. The active health is kind of a little bit heading toward the last section of the page, a little something middle down. And the reason why I say we have to watch that, we look like we have spent $4.4 million in health insurance and still have about $2.8. We have to remember, teachers, their pay is going to go through longer than what we have left for pay periods, so they're going to have that lump sum payable that's going to pick up in July and August months. So we have to keep in mind that we're going to be spending a little bit more than just a few more months in insurance there. So we'll keep an eye on that. We do have some grants that will help offset some of this. Right now, we're charging everything here, but we have folks who are on grant, who take health insurance, and we'll, you know, reclass those payments to those grants we were performance. And last but not least, page 11, we had some changes with our school choice sending numbers that we had that differed from the estimates from the governor's budget. We always use the governor's cherry sheet figures, because as you know, as we're going through the process now, it changes, it goes up and down. Looks like we're going to get money and then they take it away, so we always go with that because we feel that's a very conservative number to use. But unfortunately, with the school choice sending and the charter of school, we have to pay for those, and so we have to account for the additional amount being charged to the budget. And so I just wanted to point out that we have done that already with this. So when we look at the bottom line at the 5.3, there's going to be things that are going to come off that aren't particularly, that aren't encumbered right now because they can't be, like health insurance, subs, and I'm trying to come up on the line, might be in that, but Medicare and those types of things. So that 5.3 million will be dropping down, but we've already accounted for the school choice and the charter. So it looks like we'll be coming in pretty close this year, and hopefully by May, we'll have a better picture of just where we might be in June.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Macedo?
I don't have questions on the fiscal year 19 budget, but last night, I attended the town council meeting in Bridgewater, and Mr. Wood, the budget chair, mentioned that he will be in contact with you if he hasn't already about looking at the fiscal year 20 budget, to see if there's any capital expenditures that we have, and if there shouldn't be in there, that might help us come closer to our number. I was kind of like, "Good luck with that," but, so just expect a call from the Bridgewater side.
Yes, we have sent them information that he's requested, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, next up, we have the Treasurer's Quarterly Report. Mr. Connery.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Lieutenant Swenson. I did send you all the nine-month budget and all the figures that relate to it. I wanted you to see income that we've gained for the nine months and the expenses that we've done. Actually, if you've looked at it, most everything seems very even, falling along for the next few months, we should be in very good shape. One of the things I looked at, and I was actually talking to Ms. Macedo about, was the Chapter 71 transportation. We may see a little bit more in that budget. Kathy does a great job in all sides of the governor's budget and knows that the House and Senate are going to drive her crazy, so we may get 1.8 sheet budget, 1.6, and that's maybe, and that's, might have a little bit $234,000 or more, so. But everything else is going along, as I said, in line. I don't know if you have any questions, because I will let you know that, you know, I still have money in the bank, as you can see on the bottom, and use that to pay the rest of the bills. But any questions you want. And the balance, just for, I gave you like total sweep all the way through March, and the bank balance would be about, for the nine months, be about $12 million, which I try and keep that figure going throughout the whole year, so.
Any questions?
Mr. Dolan? I just have a quick question about the governor's budget and the House and Senate budgets. When will we find out what that Chapter 71 number is? Well, so it's FY '20. Yeah, so, well, so we don't actually know it for FY '19, do we? Because we got money for FY '18, because it's, frankly, it's a kludge way they do it, but...
Yeah, they pay us twice a year for Chapter 71. And what ends up happening a lot of times is at the end of the year, they may find in their budget that they're able to do a little bit different percentage, or we might get a little bit more for, okay, sorry, I'm trying to think of, I mean, Kenny Bento and, you know, Matthew, not special education. Kenny Bento, I was thinking vocational, because we used to get that money too. So we may get a little extra when they settle up with all the towns and whatnot. They go based on your end-of-year report for the prior year, so they're estimating. So when I actually send in the information, then they take off, you know, from that percentage, not from the prior years. So that may change as well. Once they have looked at the '18 budget and seen what we actually reported, then they'll be able to give us whatever the difference is. But it looks like right now, we're going to be getting the 1.8, which I had used the governor's number of 1.6, which again, that was based on 17 or 16 figures, so it's, you know, it's kind of old figures. So that will go to E&amp;D.
So if we do get that 1.8 instead of 1.6, that $200,000, with that, is the money we're even spending, which...
You can't spend it. That's revenue that has come in, and what will happen is that will close out. Now, you may have some accounts that you didn't get enough in, so you have to cover those accounts, revenue accounts. But overall, if everything comes in the way that we estimated, then that would just close to E&amp;D. That would help that 1.7 that we're using a million of climb maybe to, you know, 900.
To repair ourselves back for the money we took from our E&amp;D savings.
It'll help us here. And you always want to budget conservatively, because if your revenues are short, you have to cut your budget.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone's questions for Mr. Connery? We're all good? We're all good? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connery. Thank you.
All right, so we've done our personnel report. We do not have any unfinished business, and now we're going to move on to new business, and we need the surplus with Mr. Fox. And in your school committee packet, you will notice that there was a new North River Collaborative Agreement, and that is because I believe that Holbrook would like to join the collaborative, and because that is such, we need a motion to approve the amended changes to the collaborative agreement as presented and proposed in consultation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Motion for that amended change by Mrs. Scolparis, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? And Mr. Swenson, you recommend this?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. All right, and we'll move on to our approval...
Madam Chair, if I may ask through you to Mr. Swenson, would you just give us some highlights for our viewers of the benefits of the district being a member of the North River Collaborative?
Some things, services that we maybe do not want to, that we may not have available to us in terms of special ed, programming, service providers. They can provide us those type of services without us having to hire our own folks with benefit packages and the rest. So it's a cost avoidance measure that we were able to, you know, especially to an intervention, we may need a school site, or we may need speech, or something along those lines, but they also have programming that if some of our students need an out-of-district placement, the collaboratives are a lot more cost-effective than a private school setting. So we try to go the collaborative route, whether for the North River or Reed's first, and then Mr. Joe Malos, if they can't get, if they don't feel like that's appropriate, we'll then look to other private-type institutions for our students who need out-of-district, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're going to move on to the approval of warrants. And first, we'll have the payroll warrants dated March 28, 2019, and April 11, 2019. Motion by Mrs. Scolparis, second by Mrs. King. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Never mind. Sorry, I thought we were short.
Okay. No flag. Now, we'll have the general ledger warrants dated March 28, 2019, and April 11, 2019. Motion by Mrs. Scolparis, second by Mr. Dolan. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. And now, we do have...
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Under new business, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote that the last day of school be on Monday, June 17, 2019, and that would be a half a day of school.
Motion by Mr. Dolan, last day of school, Monday, June 17, a half day. Motion, or did you have a question?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Mrs. King, second by Mrs. Holbrook.
I made a motion.
Oh, all right. All right. Motion by, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Great, thank you. So voted. All right, moving on to a sentence of gifts. Mr. Swenson?
Yes, Madam Chair. We already have one gift this month, and not to give away too much, because we are going to recognize these students next month. Two of our DECA students did qualify for the Nationals, for the DECA competition that will take place in Orlando. Obviously, it's very expensive in terms of travel and whatnot, and they will be accompanied by the advisor, Mr. Ferrera, and we will recognize those students in May. However, to offset the costs, they did write a grant through BSU. And BSU, as generously as they always do, granted a $3,000 grant for those students. So we're so appreciative of BSU and the partnership grants and all that they do to support us and our students. So thank you to Sue McComb and all the folks that serve on that partnership community grant for allowing us that opportunity for our students.
Very good. Motion to approve the acceptance of gifts. Motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Scolparis. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. And next, we're up to public comment. Anyone like to have a comment for the public? Seeing none, very good. And before we adjourn, I would also like to recognize, this is a night of thank yous. Today is Administrative Assistant Day, and we would like to thank Judy McDougall for all her hard work and wisdom in keeping this school committee organized and compliant. Managing eight schedules for meetings and events is a challenge. Answering the superintendent's phone is a super challenge. Your calmness and ability to multitask are greatly appreciated, and we thank you very much for your dedication and support for the Bridgewater-Rayham communities. Would you like to speak? Go ahead. I just have a few announcements.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Oh, all right. And this Saturday, the town elections are going to be held, and due to the late election date, the school committee is going to hold a special meeting for the purpose of reorganizing on April 30 at 6:30 in the superintendent's conference room. And our next regular school committee meeting will be held on May 22 in the library at the middle school. And Mr. Swenson, did you have...
Rayham Middle School.
What did I say? You said middle school. Rayham Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then, Mr. Fox took us up on our offer to jet, but I just wanted to thank Mr. Fox. He is leaving us after two years of service. He's brought a lot to the district. He definitely brought a different perspective and lens to that facilities job. He brought a lot of grant money through us. He also likes to spend a lot of money. He's like the little brother I never wanted, but I do thank him for all of his service, and I wish him well in his new position. And also, he is going to be getting married too. And also, he is going to get married too this year, so he better make some money.
Well, we wish him well. And with that, did anyone else have any announcements?
I just want to say thank you again for the kind words. It was a pleasure to serve the district. And thank you, Pat, for, you know, for putting up with me. I'll be drawing you out.
All right. So with that, a motion to adjourn at 8:51. Motion by Mrs. Copares, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.